Thank you very much, Vice Speaker, for being here. Senator Panglinen, Palashas, Mabini, Aditalo. Sam Mabini, yes, Senator. Yes, legal counsel on both sides, you're here, thank you. Yes, there it is. Scan the room. Let's say just back in session for this afternoon. I'd like to recognize the Vice Speaker and Bill Number 178-31-L.S.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill was actually introduced in the last legislature and reintroduced again this time. I think many of you may remember that there was a big controversy a few months ago when the attorneys general of several of the states joined together to bring suit to try to stop the distribution and sale of caffeinated, big, tall cans of alcohol, which contain the equivalent of about five different drinks. Just that one can will take you way over the blood alcohol content, and it encourages binge drinking. The worst part of it, and was the initial reason that this bill was introduced, was when it first came out, it blast, it was either Blaster or Loco. The drink actually had, was heavily caffeinated. And what it resulted in was that people were getting blood alcohol contents in the point twos, but because of the high caffeine, they were, they were or are, or thought that they were alert, and so they were wide awake drunks. And then when the caffeine wore out, they just passed out because their BAC was so high. So the attorneys generals joined together, and the FDA acted fairly quickly, probably the fastest that anybody has ever seen the FDA respond to an issue. And they banned the content of caffeine in the drink itself, but the problem is, it's been replaced by other stimulants such as guarana, ginseng, absinthe, and taurine. And then they've also decided they would flavor it, and they would sell it in tall cans that look like the tea cans that some people drink. And it's very difficult to even note that you're carrying around an alcohol can, a can with alcoholic beverage in it. There's some move in the states to actually have printed across the front, "This is a alcoholic drink," because they've had problems where kids have actually gone to school, little kids, elementary school kids, have shown up on campus and been found to have in their lunch pail Mike's Hard Liquor, I mean, not Hard Liquor, Hard Lemonade. Figuring that it was a lemonade, they can, they can read, and it says lemonade, but they don't see the alcohol content in it, and so they bring it to school. And, but this bill specifically is addressing those big, tall cans like Loco, and weed, and Blast, that have the stimulants in it and high alcohol content, because the concerns that a lot of medical professionals have is that it results in people being binge drinking. There's a letter that I, that was addressed on September the 21st, 2009, to Attorney General Blumenthal and Sherlett, and also to Attorney General Muntiaako on the use of caffeine drinks. It's signed by Amelia Aria, Ph.D., Associate Director for Center for Substance Abuse Research, University of Maryland; Mary Claire O'Brien, an M.D., Associate Professor of the Department of Emergency Medicine; Bruce Goldberg, a Ph.D., and Professor, Director of Toxology, and a couple of other, several other Ph.D.s. And the letter ends, "In summary, there is no general consensus among health professionals and the scientific research community that the use of caffeine in alcoholic beverages has been demonstrated to be safe. On the contrary, the consumption of caffeinated alcoholic beverage has been associated with the increased risk of serious injury to oneself and to others as a result of drinking while intoxicated, sexual assaults, and other dangerous behaviors." It's a fairly long letter. If anybody wants to read it, I have it here. But that's, that's a summary at the end of the dangers of caffeinated alcoholic drinks and the, and the fact that it's in such, the advertising on it should win some awards. I mean, I'm being facetious, but it really should, because of the fact that it's so beautifully marketed in the way that the cans are, are designed. You could be driving down Marine Corps Drive, and most police officers would not be able to recognize that that was the alcoholic beverage. I mean, I can spot a guy with a Bud Riser can or a light can in the next car, but when they have some of these, I, it's, I'm not sure whether or not it's Arizona Iced Tea in one of its many flavors, or some of those other tall cans of iced teas. But these are caffeine, I mean, alcoholic drinks that have five times the alcohol content than of one beer. And because of the fact that it's so sweet, and has, comes in many flavors, that young, it's very easy to drink, as opposed to drinking hard liquor. I think many of us remember when we first started to drink, it wasn't straight up Scotch on the rocks, or vodka on the rocks. We started out drinking with orange juice and a couple of other collins to soften the taste of the alcohol. And they've managed with these, these new big, tall cans of alcohol to flavor it such that it tastes better than drinking soda. And it's not until after you've had the whole can that it knocks you off your feet with the, with the high alcohol content in it. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will join me in this effort to try to prevent binge drinking, to make our kids and our roads safer by removing these things. And in some legislation that I will be introducing would be to, to make sure that it's very definitely labeled. I just came from a conference in Seattle two weeks ago, where there's a move throughout the country to have in big, bold letters on these cans, "This is an alcoholic beverage," because most people will drink it and think it's punch. And so I ask for the support of my colleagues, and I thank you for the opportunity, and I thank the good Chairman for holding the hearing, reporting the bill out, and especially that he has joined me as a co-sponsor. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome. Vice Speaker on the motion. Is there anyone who would like to speak on it? So the motion then, Vice Speaker will be to send it down to the voting file.
Thank you very much.
The motion then to send Bill 178 to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 200-31-COR, I recognize the Speaker, Speaker Panglinen. Bill 200.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that Bill Number 208-31-COR.
200?
200?
200. Not yet, that's 208's afterwards, after this.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 200, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 200 is a bill that would approve a commercial lease buying between Department of Land Management and the Matiachi Plaza Development. This is a area in Dedodo called the Buffer Strip. Many years ago, the legislature transferred the jurisdiction of the Buffer Strip from the Government of Guam to the mayor's office for use of the community. And the mayor was given jurisdiction over the property that would allow them to lease the Buffer Strip to adjacent businesses for, usually for landscaping, or maybe some, some have been able to use it for additional parking. But in most instances, it's for landscaping purposes, and the businesses that front Marine Drive, Marine Corps Drive in that area would then beautify and plant foliage along that, along those areas. And it's in between their property and Marine Corps Drive. Usually, the lease is, is just approved by the Department of Land Management and by, by the mayors through a bill that gave authority to the mayors. However, the legislative body subsequently had enacted legislation during the discussions on the taking of Paget that required the land leases for government lands to all come through the legislature. So what this does is, this, the Matiachi Development and the mayor's office had negotiated a renewal of a lease that they have, and this is right there, the corner of Kentucky Fried Chicken, Matiachi Plaza Development, so you see, it's all green space. They had negotiated the lease for the continuance of the use of that property as a green belt area by Matiachi Development. And when they were ready to consummate the lease, they were informed that due to the subsequent action by the legislature, that lease had to come down to the legislature. And so this bill would approve that lease that was negotiated. The, the income of the lease goes to the Municipal Planning Council of Dedodo and Gigo for use of the municipality, so it does not go to the government coffers, it does not go to the general fund. It is just used by those communities for their public service programs within those villages. One of the features that we have put in, that updated it since it's now coming before the legislature, is that we are now prohibiting the use of the property by the lesssee that would make the property unusable at the expiration of the lease term. And this would include things like ponding basin, because what we're seeing is, some of the businesses were using the greenbelt space, which was what it was intended to. So now they're digging up ponding basins and putting the ponding basin on the government land and keeping their lands usable. And so we wanted to ensure that in that development of that area and the use for green space, that they don't put things like ponding basin, which then devalue the government land itself. So that prohibition is, is done. And so, Madam Speaker, this would allow the, the lease of the property as negotiated between the Municipal Planning Council and Matiachi Development, which is under statute, they're, under their jurisdiction and prerogative.
On the motion, are there any speakers? So Speaker Panglinen, motion then to send it down to?
Yes, I'd like to move to send it to.
On the motion to send to the voting file without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 208-31-COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, be placed in the third reading file.
And would you like to speak on it?
Yes, I would, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 208 would put into effect a program that would allow the development of Chamorro Land Trust property right here in Agatna for the purpose of the construction of a Department of Land Management building. This is something that's been in progress for many years now. The Department of Land Management, as you know, Madam Speaker, used to be located over in Adalup, next to where, or where Huraw Park is now, next to the old, I mean, as part of, right across the Pego Cemetery. During one of the natural disasters, the property and the building was declared unsafe, and FEMA at that time had awarded a grant to the Department, to the Government of Guam that would demolish the building on the condition that nothing be rebuilt there because of the floodplain zone, and then granted a seed money for construction of a replacement building. And so the Government of Guam went about trying to find a suitable site within the Hagatna area, and the site that was ultimately identified was part of the Chamorro Land Trust properties. And there was discussion between the Chamorro Land Trust and the Department of Land Management for a development of that property. Originally, there was discussion between Gura and the Department, and Chamorro Land Trust for Gura to provide the additional funding necessary to construct the building itself. That went along until Gura had placed the condition that the only way that they will construct the building is if they were given title to the property. And of course, the property belonging to the Chamorro Land Trust was not able to basically take that property out, or there was no desire to reverse the policy at that time of taking land inventory assets out of the trust. And so additional discussions were entered into with the government and the Chamorro Land Trust, and there was finally an agreement between the Department of Land Management, which was able to secure the funding commitment for the construction of a building. And so this bill would allow the development of the property and give the development rights basically to the property to the Department of Land Management. Land Management's the recipient of the FEMA grant through their Land Survey Revolving Fund. They've been able to go out, secure financing for the construction of the building, and we wanted to pursue into existing statute, allow the Chamorro Land Trust and to designate this piece of property to be managed by Land Management for the purpose of the construction of the Department of Land Management building. In addition, the Chamorro Land Trust would get space in the building itself, plus any lease payments that will accrue based on the size of the property and the construction cost. Land Management, being the developer, would get credit of the mortgage payments it makes towards the lease. So everyone kind of benefits. The trust gets development of its property, possible income stream, additional income stream. It gets a building that it can occupy and call its own in conjunction and in co-development with the Department of Land Management, and the Department of Land Management can access the financing needed to, to build the property, vacate its current space in the ITC building, move down here. Now, the prop, the design has been done, and it's going to be about 50,000 square me, square feet. It's going to include a parking garage. So what this will allow is additional government agencies may be able to occupy space in this building too. And when that happens, we can then transfer the lease payments that these agencies are paying to the private landlords, to the Chamorro Land Trust, and to the Department of Land Management to service the debt on the construction, as well as service the lease payments the Department of Land Management makes. So that, this bill basically outlines the process of doing that. It recognizes the consolidation of the lots that was needed in order to do that, confers the development authority of the, the property to the Department of Land Management, and then sets the authorization to lease for the Chamorro Land Trust to enter into the lease with Land Management, and then sets about in providing for credit towards the ground lease payments based upon their contribution to the cost of the debt service and such. This, we had our public hearing on this, we've talked about it. There's no problem in terms of the financing proceeding with lease versus title to the property. The financing company that has been identified, selected, and awarded the, the financing for the building is agreeable to finance continuing the same terms and conditions based upon a long-term lease between, and not title ownership by the government or by Department of Land Management. So we hope that with this, the Department of Land Management can move forward. The design is, if not done, almost all done already. And again, the financing has been awarded, so it'll be just then the implementation of all of these to put it up. The, the site we're talking about, and the property we're talking about, is this large vacant lot by the Hulali Shopping Center, Madam Speaker. And so I ask my colleagues to, to look at the bill, consider it, and ask for their support.
On the motion, I recognize Senator Duennius.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill Number 208-31-COR. And I want to start by commending the author, the good retiring speaker from Baragada, on his tireless efforts to ensure not only just the longevity and the, and the realization of the programs within Chamorro Land Trust, but also identifying as well the, the fact that these land agencies have an excellent opportunity to work together within one building and to really create a true relationship between all of the land agencies, which actually in this situation also will include ancestral lands. Madam Speaker, actually, just as a matter of reporting, I did see through to 100% completion of design of the building. The team did a great job, and, and the retiring speaker's correct, there's over 50,000 square feet of, of building space, floor space. The design was a very open design, so that, as the retiring speaker mentioned, there will be many opportunities for other agencies within the government to, to utilize this beautiful building when complete. And really start, what I believe is, is, is a great start to finally getting government, you know, buildings on government land, so that we can really stop paying these exorbitant amount of rent out there in the community. I mean, I know it's good for business, but the fact of the matter is, is also, government has resources, it has land, and really should, you know, be prudent about having its own buildings and, and being able to save this government a lot of money going forward. So once again, I just have to commend the, the author and say this is a great piece of legislation, especially as you mentioned, since the financing is in place, it's ready to go forward. And I just really want to say that this is another step also in showing how when Land Management, Chamorro Land Trust, ancestral lands, when they work together, I mean, they can really move our community forward quickly. And, and another note, Madam Speaker, with regard to this, as we all remember, the old Land Management building had a very unique, you know, organization also, based on the one-stop that I, I know as a small businessman during the time, I appreciated to be able to go there and pay GRT and, and to deal with, as a one-stop within the government. As we know, Land Management deals a lot with, with public works, and I believe that, that's still in the plans, Madam Speaker, is to once again, open a one-stop within this building here in the capital of Agatna, where, you know, business goes about every day, and it's very convenient. So this piece of legislation, which will allow for that building to be built quickly, is excellent, and our government will really move forward, you know, in assisting our people, and definitely, you know, ensuring a, a home once and for all for one of our most critical agencies, and that is the one that takes care of our Chamorro lands and the land within the government inventory. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak in full support of, of this bill.
You're welcome, Mr. Senator. On the motion, Senator Frank Blasher, recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too stand in full support of the, of this piece of legislation. I want to congratulate and commend the author for working diligently. I now know that he's been working a number of years in concert with, with the different agencies. To be able to put some finality to this, I had the, I guess, the, the task in my previous position of, of trying to work the, the details and being able to provide the seed money for Land Management to be, to be rebuilt, and authored legislation to, to move Land Management along in that process, and this bill here provides the finality to this, to that long and arduous process of being able not only to provide the building for Land Management, but also for those other entities such as the Chamorro Land Trust. It is a win-win-win situation all the way around. It would provide now them a, finally, a home, and that you don't have the, for, for lack of a better term, the tyranny of distance between the two agencies for our people to be able to, to, to get the, the needed land transactions taken care of in the government. And so, you know, with that, Madam Speaker, and I, I believe, looking at the legislation, it does not require any further amendments and anything. I think this is a good piece of legislation that was put together. Again, want to applaud the, the, the author, and I stand in full support, and I ask my colleagues as well to, to lend their support to this piece of legislation for, for, for these entities. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Senator. Can we take a brief recess? Um, can we take a brief recess? Is there anyone who would like to speak on the main motion? Mr. Speaker, Ben, would you like to, to close? Okay, so the motion then to move Bill 208 to the voting file without any objections, and so ordered. We're going to skip Senator Munia Barnes until she returns. Senator Ada, we're going to move on to Senator Yamashita on Bill Number 213.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I make a motion to move Bill Number 213-31 to the third reading file, and I ask to be able to speak to it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is a bill, an act to repeal subsection 6108 of Chapter 6, Article 1 of Title 17 GCA, relative to sick, sick persons. Up until about five minutes ago, when one of our colleagues came and approached me, I see this in, in a little bit of a different light, but I want to present the reason why I proffered this bill. I interpreted this section as referring to those of us with physical or mental conditions as sick. And I think years and years ago, perhaps that's the way society looked at somebody with a disability, that they were sick. And then if they were sick, then they didn't have to go to school. But you, Madam Speaker, know so very well that our society has evolved to a point where we have growing respect for those of us with disabilities, and that there is no reason why anybody should be not allowed in school, or excused from school. As a matter of fact, everybody should be in school, and there cannot be an excuse that your disability prohibits you from being a part of a school community. And so, I have proffered this to remove all of the language that says, "Children whose physical or mental condition is such as to prevent or render inadvisable attendance at school or application to study shall be exempted from being required to go to school, and the superintendent shall require satisfactory evidence of the condition to be furnished." And I was real comfortable in doing this because GCA, um, Title 9, Chapter 9, 17 GCA specifically talks about IDEA and FAP, Free Appropriate Education, to ensure that all of our students who are identified with disabilities get the kinds of supports that they are deserving of as a human being, so that their rights are indeed protected and safeguarded. And so, I do know that there's an amendment, that it's going to be shared on the floor, and I'll, I'll let that come, but this is, this is the bill that I have introduced. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Senator. On the motion, Senator Tony Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after consulting with the, the author of the bill, we, I'd like to proffer an amendment, and it's, um... What it is, is to basically, just to restore the, the original, original language on 6801, uh, 6108, and just to delete the words "physical or mental condition" and to replace it with "illness or ailment." So in that, such, it'll read, "Children whose illness or ailment is such as to prevent or render inadvisable attendance at school or application to study shall be exempted from the application of 6102, but the superintendent shall require satisfactory evidence of the condition to be furnished."
Can we take a recess?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after consulting with the, the author of the bill, we, I'd like to proffer an amendment, and it's, um...
What it is, is to basically, just to restore the, the original, original language on 6801, uh, 6108, and just to delete the words "physical or mental condition" and to replace it with "illness or ailment." So in that, such, it'll read, "Children whose illness or ailment is such as to prevent or render inadvisable attendance at school or application to study shall be exempted from the application of 6102, but the superintendent shall require satisfactory evidence of the condition to be furnished."
Can we take a recess?
Madam Speaker, after consulting with the, the author of the bill, we, I'd like to proffer an amendment, and it's, um... What it is, is to basically, just to restore the, the original, original language on 6801, uh, 6108, and just to delete the words "physical or mental condition" and to replace it with So in that, such, it'll read, "Children whose illness or ailment is such as to prevent or render inadvisable attendance at school or application to study shall be exempted from the application of 6102, but the superintendent shall require satisfactory evidence of the condition to be furnished."
Can we take a recess?
Madam Speaker, after consulting with yourself and the author, and I'm, I'd like to withdraw my amendment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to withdraw, no objections, so ordered. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? I would ask the author if she would like to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I asked my colleagues for consideration and support of this. This certainly helps build a foundation of respect for all children as they grow, as we find out exactly what their strengths are and their weaknesses, to help them realize a, a quality of life. Madam Speaker, as I listen to you, then I also ask that the whole, that, that section 2 also be deleted.
Okay. On that motion, without any objection, so ordered. So on the motion then to send Bill 213-31 to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Um... We're on, uh, we're back to 209. I recognize the author, Senator Munia Barnes.
See, um, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move a Number 209-31COR to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it briefly, please.
Yes, Senator, you may continue.
I'll take my shit. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this Bill 209-31 is an act to amend Section 1033 of Chapter 10, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, and, Madam Speaker, this is relative to including the Guam-Cocoa Road Race as a part of the Guam Micronesian Island Fair, and to provide for the support from the Guam Police Department and Guam Fire Department. Madam Speaker, as you know, the Guam-Cocoa Race is a running event race that is sponsored by the Guam Community, I mean, the Guam Visitors Bureau, when it was first started out. And in its initial inception, Madam Speaker, this race garnered several hundred people. Fast forward to 2010, Madam Speaker, this race has garnered over 2,000 people. As it is recognized as an international event, as it is recognized as a, a running event that brings people from all over the Pacific region, Madam Speaker, it is a race that promotes sports tourism. It is a race that brings international competition from all parts of the, of this region, and also brings in other competition from the North American market. And, Madam Speaker, this inclusion, to have the Cocoa Road Race as a part of the Guam Micronesian Island Fair is, is an event that will not only bring in revenue, continue to bring revenue to Guam, but it is an event that Guam can truly be proud of. As we look at new resources and new ideas to bring folks in to visit our beautiful tropical island paradise, um, this is one way of having folks who've never been here before, who love the sport of running, who want to compete in international competition, to come to this island, not just to compete, but to visit the beauty and to put some resources as they, of course, when they come here to compete, they would have to stay in our hotels, they would have to stay in our, our, uh, they would have to eat at our restaurants, they would have to travel on our roads, and of course, they will get the opportunity to meet our community, to enjoy our, our fiestas. As you know, because this race, Madam Speaker, is tied in with the Micronesian Island Fair, they will also have the opportunity to meet other folks within the neighboring islands as they participate in that island fair that's being done during that time. Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleagues, please support me on this effort in promoting and advocating for sports tourism to come to Guam. I think that it's important, as, as I noted earlier, as we look at new ideas of bringing people here, when this race first started many, in 2006, I said it brought several hundred runners. Now we're looking at over 2,000. The race is scheduled again to be, to, is slated for October of this year, and we hope to bring way over the 2,000 runner mark. So, um, I do have an amendment, Madam Speaker, and I know this amendment has just been passed out. I know that some of my concerns from my colleagues were the event of, uh, where do we find the resources to look at the Guam Police Department and the Guam Fire Department coming in while they do this event? I don't know if you know, Madam Speaker, but this event on the competition day alone, it is, it is about a, a couple of hour event. It starts at maybe, depending on, on the course, it's, starts early in the morning, but the official race starts maybe about, uh, 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, and depending on how many, uh, what the time the last runner is, it, um, ends probably in, in, in an hour or two. And of course, there is a, a, how would we say, brunch event that happens after that, and, uh, of course, the acknowledgements of prizes and winners during that event. But it, for this event to happen here, the Cocoa Road Race, does take some, um, time. The coordination is spearheaded by the Guam Visitors Bureau. There are a lot of stakeholders within the community who help out, who come out, but more importantly, so, um, as Guam, as this is an official, um, event for the Visitors Bureau, what better way than for our agencies to help out and assist? I did pass out a, an amendment to this, Madam Speaker, that would include more specifically, it will read, um, section, section 1, section 2 of the bill, 209-31COR, is amended to read as follows, and it'll start out with section 2, section 1033B of Chapter 10, Title 1 GCA, Guam Code annotated is hereby deleted, and a new B is added to read. And then, of course, it includes the Guam-Cocoa Road Race, and there were some recommendations at the public hearing from the Guam Fire Department, and also the request of what we could do to help the Guam Police Department. And it would read that the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, and all other law enforcement entities of the government of Guam shall provide public safety support at the Guam Micronesian Island Fair and the Guam-Cocoa Road Race at the request of the Guam Visitors Bureau. The Guam Fire Department shall also inspect all booths and temporary structures to ensure compliance of the Guam, of, of fire and life safety requirements as issued, and issue required permits to operate such booths and temporary structures. permits to operate such booths and temporary structures. Again, Madam Speaker, that was at the request of the Guam Fire Department, as they presently do inspections also.
On the -- okay, so she's introduced the amendment now, so on the amendments, when you speak, on the -- not on the motion, on the amendment.
Madam Speaker, the author would yield, I -- earlier, in the -- in the bill itself, if this is the reference, once again, I'm looking at the section, if this takes the place of the Guam Police Department and the Guam Fire Department shall provide, and if that's what it does, I was originally going to move an amendment in the original bill to add after Guam Fire Department in addition to the Office of Civil Defense. And I can explain that later, but even as of now, you know, during this -- during a testimony on this bill, and later on in speaking with the Administrator of Office of Civil Defense, Chuck Ada, he's asking, actually, that down the road, we introduce legislation which requires that any event that gathers more than 500 people and participants be a place before the Office of Civil Defense for coordination of all law enforcement activities. And it's really key, you know, like I said, I'll explain that later, but if the author would allow this amendment or demand the amendment --
So would you want to --
Yeah.
So why would we take a brief recess?
Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, it's a very simple amendment at this time. To amend the amendment, after the Guam Fire Department, we will be adding Guam Homeland Security, and then another comma, of course, and all other law enforcement entities. So we're just adding Guam Homeland Security in the amendment.
Any objection?
No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any others wish to be heard on the bill? Or on the amendment first? Any objection on the amendment?
Yes, on the amendment.
On the amendment?
No, no, the -- your amendment.
Yes, on the -- Munia Barnes amendment.
Oh, yes, yes, your amendment, or not the amendment that was amended.
No, we already adopted, Senator Duñez.
You're right, you're right. Okay, very good. So we're back on the --
Munia Barnes.
-- amendment that has been amended. Okay. And I do support that, because I think it's important that all law enforcement entities of the government participate. And there's always been this concern, and I realize that our chair on public safety is also concerned about this, and I don't know whether its language should be put in here, because when I was reading the description of what everybody's going to be doing, I -- that kind of concerns me a little bit, because I'm saying that it's so very specific to one thing or two things, and I'm just saying, there's not enough room that just in case there are, if there's anything else in their mission to be able to, that will -- for them to provide the services that will be needed beyond this. I just don't want them to be tied specifically to what we have here on -- in the law, that will become law. So, and I'm not sure, Mr. Speaker, how we're going to be able to do that. I'm just thinking out loud right now, and then maybe the author may come up with something with, in her discussion of this, or anybody else. The other is, because we're trying to get the law enforcement individuals involved, and that's a major, of course, part of it, to provide, of course, safety for all of the participants. And I'm just wanting to make sure, and I guess by actually discussing this, also whoever is going to be appointed to be a part of this whole committee in the design and planning, that they try to balance this out, and that the burden is not just all on the Fire Department, or the balance, the burden is placed specifically on public safety, and that they really all share in this, and that there be a proportionate number of individuals who are providing some assistance. So that's, you know, I'm not making an amendment or anything, but I just think it's important that that be understood, that, you know, sometimes you don't want to be too specific, you might, is there any room here somehow? You know how it is, like, for example, when we say about, when we're describing individuals' duties, we always have that one liner in the bottom that, you know, in any other duties, you know, as a sign, could there be, you know, that flexibility as well in terms of what every single department and agency who are participating, that it's not just for that one specific line item? Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Mr. Chair, I could have waited until we got to the main body of the bill, but it also has some relevance in this amendment here, and I appreciate and that we recognize that there's going to, you know, in preparation and as a result of the number of events that are going to occur, that there are other entities, law enforcement entities, public safety entities, that have to be involved in this whole process. But I need to regurgitate a concern that this body also had to deal with, you know, last year as well, with regards to, very simply, who's going to pay for this? You know, the concern that I have here is that recognizing the event and the enormity of the event, and I know in as far as, I remember the conversations we had last year with regards to the economic benefits that this provides, like, but it was an issue that we had to deal with last year, and I think it's necessary for us to, again, deal with it this year as well. I'm trying to recall how we rectified the situation last year. I don't want to say that we, and bring the thing out with regards to having GBB pay for all of this, because it's going to cause you to run down to your seat to want to have to testify. I just think that there needs to be a discussion with regards to the, you know, the payment, or who's going to be paying for this, for the participation of these things. I know that we, there could be an argument that this should be a part of their regular responsibilities and whatnot, but events such as this, as was evidenced even by the most recent Liberation Day activities, there was the hiring of off-duty personnel, there was, you know, there were overtime costs and things that we have to, we have to be mindful of, that don't, aren't necessarily already automatically budgeted in the operations of the different entities that we're going to be tasking, because the language here, and for good reason, is not permissive. It basically says they have to, they have to be there. And I hate to throw a wrench into the whole system and into the whole conversation, but this is something that we have to discuss, is the issue of the payment here. I don't want to make an amendment yet to, with regards to who should be responsible for this. I think maybe this calls for, maybe a need for a recess to be able to deal with that before we go on. Thank you very much.
One minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just got chastised by my sister for bringing this whole thing up, and she, you know, felt the necessity of reminding me as to, you know, the resources that GBB provides to the different agencies in exchange, I guess, for their participation in this thing. I want to thank her for that, and for the sake of, you know, not getting on the bad side, and recognizing this is something we can work, we can deal with, and not wanting you to come down here and defend TAF, okay, my concerns have been addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. On the Munia Barnes amendment? Any objection to the Munia Barnes amendment? On the main bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and yes, my name is on my list. That's my favorite, was right. Anyway, Mr. Speaker, I do have an amendment as I read, you know, further on, on the bill, and I'm happy to see, of course, that, you know, although, yes, there will be a lot of in-kind services that would be provided, but it goes to show also as well that there are going to be some efforts to be able to, you know, raise money through the events in terms of, you know, food and beverages, products, handicrafts, and all of that that would be on sale. And then there will be these proceeds, and how these proceeds are going to be divided up. I'm asking my colleagues to consider on page four, line 12 to 13, that I, that we, where it says expenses, comma, and delete those lines and replace it with, that 25% rather of the proceeds, rather, will be deposited into FestPAC 2012 and Folk Life Festival Trust account. As you know, and you've heard this during the budget time, is that Guam will be sponsoring the FestPAC on 2016. For next year, it will be in New Caledonia, I mean, Solomon Islands, and, I mean, just Google the event there, and they have actually already collected in U.S. dollars, $2 million. And, you know, we've just started to put some money in, and I'm asking for your support. We're starting early, as early as we can, and every little bit would help. So it would be then the 25% to be deposited for the FestPAC 2012 and Folk Life Festival Trust account.
Did you mean 2012 or 2016?
No, it's, it's, well, right now, it's FestPAC 2012, because for every year at a time. At least that's how it showed in the budget.
Okay.
Unless you want it 20s.
2016, the 2012 is possible.
So every year, we have to do it by the year, I'm thinking.
2016.
So you want it FestPAC 2016? Okay. 2016 it is. Thank you.
I think it should be net, probably.
That would be net. Point of information.
Okay. So on the Juan Pad amendment, Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of the good speaker from Malolo, who wanted to amend this part of the section to You would think that it's only 2011 and five years, you know, we've got a long way to go, but believe it or not, before you know it, the time will creep up with you, and we're going to have over 29 nations come over with over 5,000 artists, dancers, storytellers, just traditional chiefs, and so many people coming in to see, to share in their traditions and values. And I think that this is one way to show the commitment that we're here to host an excellent Festival of the Arts in 2016, the same way we did with the South Pacific Games when they were here in 1999. And it's our way of showing that we want to see these, this festival that will garner thousands of people to come in, over 29 nations coming to visit us, that this event will be successful. So I stand in full support of Speaker Juan Pat's amendment. Thank you.
Any other speakers wish to address the Juan Pat Amendment? Any objection to the Juan Pat Amendment? Net. Net. Well, instruct counsel to make sure it's net. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Duñez.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 209-31-COR. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to commend the author, and on this floor, I really love to stand up and talk about bills that address areas that I've worked in before, and I like to, I always like to say that tourism is my first love, as I worked in the tourism industry for 16 years of my life and really enjoyed every moment of it and understand its value to our island and to our people. Mr. Speaker, I believe at this time, this event is probably the single largest event after Liberation Day that we do on an annual basis, as this race has evolved and become extremely popular. And, you know, Mr. Speaker, it's for that reason that I believe that this is truly the showcase for event tourism on Guam. And as the author was describing in terms of that effort, and as the good retiring speaker on the amendment earlier and brought up the issue of law enforcement and the costs, you know, as we go forward, Mr. Speaker, and continue to showcase this event and more events like this come to Guam, there will be time to sit down and discuss the resources that are generated through this and the perhaps taxing of law enforcement entities and to continue to allow for those entities to be reimbursed and perhaps receive additional resources as we move forward, once we can really clarify the true value going forward. And we already know, as the mover of the bill has discussed, there's been estimates of up to $1 million just on this single event brought into the island. So, Mr. Speaker, I also look forward to the opportunity, as I said, this being the largest single event possibly other than liberation, you know, as a Liberation Day chairman twice under the former administration, I saw the kind of work and the planning that goes in to pulling off that kind of event. And this will just be another event where law enforcement gets together, and as was discussed earlier, it's true, you know, normally during liberation, other than picking up additional resources, you know, it goes all the way from the Guam Police Department to the Guam Fire Department, corrections, DYA, all law enforcement gets involved, customs and quarantine. And so this is really, to me, akin to whenever I see an escort going down the street sometimes, I know people complain, but I think the police are constantly training themselves when they do that, and coordinating these events is also training. And that's why eventually also I would like to have this body adopt the Homeland Security as the key agency in civil defense, because they really are the coordinating agency for these types of events. And you always see Chuck Adah out there during liberation because he's usually the lead, and he brings all these law enforcement entities together to pull off Liberation Day every year. And I know Frank Blas Jr. used to do that as well. So, Mr. Speaker, this is a great bill. It's a great recognition that we need more of these type activities to continue to grow our economy and to continue to support not only my first love, but Guam's first love economically, other than military, which is tourism. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, does the sponsor wish to close?
Close, yes. I just want to thank the speakers who spoke on this bill. I did commit to Senator Chris Duñez being number three, Mr. Speaker, so if there's no objection, I hope that he could be the third co-sponsor on this.
No objection.
And I just want to say, Mr. Speaker, as we look at combining these two events and knowing that with all the athletes that will come here, who will be accompanied by their families and their friends, and they will be able to experience the unique cultural experience with through the demonstrations and the cultural activities and the dancing and the singing and the fiesta spirit that will be included with the Micronesian Island Fair, I know that this is a win-win, and as the good retiring speaker spoke about the possible revenues that it will come in, it has been proven that with an average spent of the athletes coming in at $400, plus the days that they come in with their companions, families or friends, we will experience a spending of over $1 million into our island. So again, I want to thank my colleagues who spoke in support of this bill, but I also ask the rest of my colleagues to please find it in your hearts to support a worthwhile event, and as we have the two come into one, this becomes an even bigger win-win for our island. So, Duncan Lina, Sidhu, Samasi, and I'd like to put it in the voting file.
On the motion to move the bill to voting file, hearing no objection. Senator Tony Adah, you're recognized on Bill 214.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we can like to take, make a motion to move 21431 substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary to the third reading file, please, and like to speak on the motion.
Hearing no objection. It's in the...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 20831 will replace the diversion process, well, let me go back. It's an act to amend Section 40105B of 7GCA to repeal and reenact Section 30.80 and 30.80.1 through 30.80.5 of 9GCA relative to deferred plea for domestic violence abusers. Mr. Speaker, 20831 will replace the diversion process for first-time family violence offenders with a deferred plea. 214, I'm sorry. And under the current diversion program, family violence offenders, in lieu of prosecution, are asked to complete a rehabilitation program. The problem there, Mr. Speaker, is that as far back as 2008, the Family Violence Task Force estimated that about 10% of the diversions were not successfully completed. And in my meetings with Varo, they showed that that failure rate might be as high as 40%. That's truly alarming. And, you know, when we did further research, it revealed that nearly, that it is nearly impossible for our prosecutors to make a winnable case for failed diversions, because the evidence is often more than three years old. Serious domestic family violence offenders show, often show a pattern of escalation. And there is evidence that show that the rehabilitation of offenders before they escalate can save lives, or they can even prevent serious physical and emotional injury to victims. Under this deferred plea program agreement, first-time offenders will enter a deferred plea guilty if the offender successfully completes the program, the rehabilitation program, then his plea is vacated and his record expunged. However, if he doesn't, if the offender doesn't complete the rehabilitation program, then the court accepts his plea and the offender will be sentenced accordingly. And sentences for first-time offenders, it depends on the severity of the offense, and they can range from a fine to community service, probation to incarceration. Domestic violence convictions are at least a misdemeanor, which means that the offender will get a criminal record. The same qualifications that apply for the diversion program, they'll also apply to deferred pleas. Examples are domestic violence cases that involve criminal sexual conduct, aggravated assault, kidnapping, or serious acts of violence. They won't qualify at all. They won't even qualify for the deferred plea. All witnesses at the hearing testified in favor of this bill, and on the advice of the Chief Deputy Attorney General Phil Tidinko, the committee included a definition of deferred Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please support this legislation so that we can turn this diversion program into a deferred plea. If these family violence offenders don't complete the rehabilitation program, then they're just going to have to suffer the consequences of their guilty plea in the beginning. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Adah. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I raise the support of Bill 214 as amended or substituted in the Committee of Public Safety. There've been much talk following, of course, the initial presentation during the public hearing between my office and the author, and this is the culmination of that, several meetings back and forth. Mr. Speaker, the difference between the current program with the family, rather, the domestic violence court is that the diversion in lieu of prosecution, the problem here is that more than a few times defendants would get into the program and then drop out. Now, sometimes they've gotten into the program for eight months, maybe 10 months, and once they drop out, then at that point prosecution can commence. The problem here that's encountered by the office of the Attorney General, Mr. Speaker, is that so much time has elapsed such that oftentimes, eventually, the offender just went unpunished, because maybe a change of heart of the complainant by the complainant, the absence of witnesses and so forth. So it has weakened so much the case for prosecution after a lapsed time of about eight months to 12 months. Now, the program of deferred plea, much as what is being proposed in Bill 214, is proving to be successful with the DUI courts. And this is the program with the deferred plea, is that a person enters the plea, but the plea is deferred, no judgment is rendered, and then if the defendant is enrolled in a treatment program and a counseling program for a period of time, and upon completion of that program, then the plea that that defendant had given at the onset will be more or less voided, and then no record exists with respect to that offense. Again, the bottom line here is that the offender still has the choice whether to go into a deferred plea agreement or just go with a trial. There was some reservation by the Public Defense Service Corporation with respect to this in that it might, I guess, encourage people to go ahead and plead and get into the program even though they don't really want to plead. I tend to disagree with that in that the defendant still has the option to go full-fledged trial if he wants. The other issue brought by the Attorney General's office during the markup hearing is that a person who has gotten into a deferred prosecution program as it is right now in lieu of prosecution is that upon completion of the program, the person really is never prosecuted, so the case is dismissed or, yeah, is dismissed. Now, this is what's being found sometimes, is that the offender really never admitted to the misdeed of that event, even though he enrolled in the program and completed the program, but for future reference, he has never really admitted to that. And for rehabilitation to occur, Mr. Speaker, there has to be an admission of a misdeed at the onset, and then treatment can follow and, you know, can really make value with the person that's participating in the program. Again, from the current program of deferred prosecution, it's not so bad, but if this bill would strengthen it in that there would be a plea accepted and deferred, and the person would be enrolled. This same policy, of course, will parallel that of the DUI court right now, and I raise in support of this. Much has been worked, by the way, the Superior Court of Guam, the presiding judge is the, I think, the more or less the in charge of the family court, and so he is very much in support of this. Since about two and a half years ago, I think he has approached a certain senator two terms ago with respect to this, and they are so glad that this came up now, and I raise in support of this, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 214-31. I think this strengthens all the escape valves that are present for those who are convicted of domestic violence and ensuring that if one agreement falls through, then there's a safety net that catches them, that tells them they must still, they must still pay. They must still pay for their crimes. And so I support everything that has already been stated, but I also want to raise the idea that ensuring that the cycle of violence is being nipped by such activity, perhaps we'll have a better, a greater chance of stopping the cycle of abuse, the cycle of violence that our families grow, so that as the children grow up, they'll have a greater chance of becoming healthy, of becoming whole, of knowing that crime does not pay, that if you do something wrong, you can get help and that you shall get help, and that you shall complete whatever the, whatever it is that they're supposed to do as justice is deemed for the victims involved. We have a very serious issue of family violence, and our children are incredibly suffering at a younger, younger age. Too many kids are being shaken to death, too many kids are being cut up and burnt, dragged to death, and these are all as a result of domestic violence. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this bill because this is just another way of chipping away the ugliness of domestic violence. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? There being none, so Senator...
We have a very serious issue of family violence, and our children are incredibly suffering at a younger, younger age. Too many kids are being shaken to death, too many kids are being cut up and burnt, dragged to death, and these are all as a result of domestic violence. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this bill because this is just another way of chipping away the ugliness of domestic violence. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? There being none, so Senator, Senator Eda, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that we place Senator Palacios as the fourth author and...
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. So on the motion then to send Bill Number 214 to the voting file without any objections, Substitute Bill Number 216, I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise and ask that Bill 216-31, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, be placed in the third reading file, and I ask for a short opportunity to address the bill.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, before I begin, I want to first thank the hardworking employees up at Public Health and Social Services that brought this problem to our attention and spent many, many, many hours in my office with my staff trying to write this piece of legislation. As many of you might or might not know, the Guam controlled substance abuse statute was last addressed about 25 years ago, and it has not been amended. And unfortunately, over the last 20-plus years, new drugs have been developed by very industrious people and unfortunately aren't listed on the controlled substance list. The AG's office came and testified in favor of this bill. The people from Cousins in Quarantine also supported this bill, but more importantly, the Department of Public Health and Social Services responsible for this was the one that brought to our attention all the discrepancies between our controlled substance listing and the controlled substance listing that is currently being utilized in most of the jurisdictions throughout the country. It's a very technical amendment, and it brings in all kinds of scientific names for medication, for drugs that are being listed, and rather than embarrass myself by trying to name all of them, I will just say that we've gone through and made sure that the spellings were correct and the scientific names were correct to make sure that when we pass, and I'm hoping for the support of all of my colleagues, that when we pass this, we will finally have something that's as current in 2011 because at the present time, it is not, the listing is not current, and I'd like to be able to bring it up to date. Thank you very much, and I thank the Chairman for conducting the hearing and for making all of the necessary substitutions to the bill, which, as you can see, were quite substantial. And I thank the Chair for his assistance and diligence in moving this forward. And I ask for my colleagues' support in the passage of this bill. Thank you.
On the motion, recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Substitute Bill 216-31, and I want to commend the author and the committee chair in their diligent work and their, I know their arduous and tedious work with the personnel from the, from Public Health in being able to put this together. As was discussed earlier, in my previous life, I was a narc, and for no pun intended, I was a narcotics agent with the Guam Police Department. And I tell you a story, ma'am, Madam Speaker, of an incident, if you can recall back in the days when the drug ICE first hit the street. Unfortunately, Guam had the notorious, I guess, distinction of actually being one of the very first places within the nation to have been hit with that epidemic. And I remember in one of the cases that I was working on, a fact known, little known to people, is that ICE in its scientific name is actually called, is actually dimethamphetamine hydrochloride. And in a case that I was working on, one of the things that we had found, we had come across, was we found, we came across a substance that was, that came back from the laboratory, it says not dimethamphetamine hydrochloride, but it was enmethamphetamine hydrochloride, which was later found to be actually more dangerous. But the dilemma that we were caught in is because of the new, how new this substance was to the drug world, where dimethamphetamine hydrochloride was illegal, enmethamphetamine hydrochloride was just something that would just hit the streets, was just manufactured. And believe it or not, for a brief period in time until we can get a ruling from the administrative law judge within DEA, it was perfectly legal. And so we were caught in a dilemma there. And this just goes to show, like as was stated by the previous speaker and the author of this legislation, that as quickly as we put out this listing, and granted that, and then this listing is dated up to the time, I guess, when the bill was put together, I would venture to say, very safely assume, and venture to say, that many of these, there are now new strains that are derivatives of these substances that are not on this list, that are illegal, that are now on the streets. That's not to say that this is a bad thing, this is a great thing, this is a great piece of legislation, because it keeps us up to date as far as we can on this. And it helps and it provides that other tool, that necessary tool, to our enforcement entities as well as to our medical industry with regards to identifying which of these substances, which of the substances are illegal, which of the substances should be controlled. And so I recognize the enormity and the magnitude of this thing, and I appreciate and I congratulate the author for this, and this is something that is necessary. And I have to share the same sentiment as the author. As quickly as these chemists, and a lot of times these backyard chemists, these kitchen chemists will come up with new products, we may have to come back and revisit this list and add on maybe a few thousand more next year. But that's the nature of the beast, and I'm glad that we're, at least we're trying to keep up with it. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this piece of legislation. Thank you very much.
On the motion, Speaker Penglenin.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, but I do want to make one amendment on page 15, I mean, page 14, line 15, where it reads 17 parentheses, "Dehydrochloromethanine testosterone parentheses four dash chloro dash seventeen bracket beta dash hydroxy dash seventeen alpha methyl andros dash one comma four dash DN dash three dash one." I'd like to amend the one to two.
One to two.
Just kidding, Madam Speaker.
One and line 18. See, one and three. Actually, you're the only one then that can vote on this bill now since you're able to read that.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to illustrate that, the hard work that everybody's done on this, and to commend the staff, because as the good author said, "I can't tell what's happening here." But we do know that we do have competent professionals within our public service sector that really know what they're doing, and that we depend on them, and that could have easily been a two, but I'm pretty sure that that's a one, and it's correct because of the work that they've done and the time they've taken to put this piece of legislation together. And I just wanted to rise and thank them for their diligence, their professionalism, and their hard work in ensuring that our legal structure also reflects what is happening out there on the streets, and that we try to keep up, they try to keep up, with all of these illegal substances and understand the technical components of these substances enough so that they can give us guidance on what we need to do from this body to continue to protect our community from illegal substances. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I congratulate and commend everyone for their hard work on this.
You're welcome. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on it? Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion then to send 216 to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. I recognize Speaker Penglenin on amended Bill Number 219.
This is Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 219-31COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
As soon as I can find it amended. Okay, I'm looking. How come I don't have it as, I only have as introduced? Oh, there it is, okay. Any who would like to speak on it?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please proceed, thank you.
Very briefly, Madam Speaker, this body went through the process of updating the Mechanics' Leans Law that sets the legal process for individuals, both owners of projects and those companies that provide services and materials to the projects, both as a contractor and as a subcontractor, outlines the relationships that they have and the processes to ensure that everyone that is working on the job, the owner, the contractors, the subcontractors, understand what their rights are and how do they protect what they provide and what they bring to the job. The contractor, of course, is the general contractor, brings with him his group of men, his investments in supplies and goods to procure and put into the project. The owner pays the contractor on a completion basis, percentage of completion basis, and then the subcontractors who provide goods and services to the general contractor also make these investments. And when something goes wrong, there's a dispute mechanism that allows these individuals to file and get resolution to the dispute that occurs on who put in what, when, where, how much does it cost, and ensuring then that we have a legal system that can resolve these disputes. And part of the dispute process that's most important in this is the notification process. And what we, in previous legislation that was passed, there was a notice to property owner that was contained in Section 33106, and it outlines when and what time and when things expire in terms of timelines for giving notice to the owner or to the contractor that you haven't been paid and that you are putting a lien or a claim against the project because you have not been paid. And in subsection F of that notice contained in 33106, there was one single line that was really missing in the translation from, in the subsequent amendments that were made to the law. Line seven of that notice read that if labor, service, equipment, or materials have been furnished to a job site by a claimant who did not give a preliminary notice, it used to read at any time thereafter, however, such claimant shall be entitled to record a lien only for labor, service, equipment, or material furnished within 20 days prior to the service of the preliminary notice. So what this says is that you had that timeline to serve your notice on a preliminary basis, and then it precluded you from filing claims if you didn't. But the single line that was missing was that, is what is underlined here. The original amendment that was read and however did not get included was that underlined line, and it would have read, "If labor, service, equipment, or materials have been furnished to a job site by a claimant who did not give a preliminary notice, that claimant shall not be precluded from giving a preliminary notice at any time thereafter, however, such claimant shall be entitled to record a lien only for labor, service, equipment, or material furnished within 20 days prior to the service of the preliminary notice and any time thereafter." So that if you don't file a preliminary notice, you're not precluded from filing one, but the timeline in which you can claim for what you have put into the job site is bracketed to only 20 days prior to that preliminary notice being issued. And then the additional time, or additional investments, or services, or goods you provided after the filing of the notice. And so, Madam Speaker, this is, again, based upon our reading and our review of the record, that single line and those 10 words, I believe, or so, was, had been deleted from that. And so we did not want to preclude anyone from giving a preliminary notice, but we didn't want, but we still bracketed of when and what he can claim once he comes back and files that preliminary notice. And so this is the, and the effective date of this would be at the time that the original amendment was enacted back in 2008. I'd like to request my colleagues' consideration and support for this legislation and would move it to the third reading.
On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on it? There being none, there's no objections, to send 219 then to the voting file without any objections, so ordered. We are on Substitute Bill Number 220, and I recognize the author, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number 220-31COR substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary. I'd also like to move it to the third reading and have an opportunity to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Substitute, Bill 220-31, substituted, is an act to amend Section 67.407, Article 4, Chapter 67, Title IX of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Uniform Controlled Substances Act. And before I move on, I'd like to thank the good Chairman of the Committee as well as the committee members in being able to strengthen the bill based on the input gathered from the public hearing as well as from other sources to make this a better bill. Initially, the bill as first introduced, wanted, was first introduced just to enhance the penalty of distribution of a controlled substance if the individual was distributing it to an individual, a female that was pregnant, and also clarify the statute or the existing law with relative to distribution of the controlled substance near schools or in the drug-free school zone. And as a result of the public hearings that were held and the discussions that were held, one of the other areas, issues of concern, and of which I totally agree on, is to include as part of, you know, the enhancement of the penalty if the distribution was to an individual who also was suffering from a mental illness, a disease, or mental defect. What this would provide, Madam Chair, is, Madam Speaker, is it would, again, strengthen the penalties and strengthen the law with regards to the distribution. You know, Madam Speaker, I spoke on a number of occasions just today of my prior life as a drug agent with the Guam Police Department, and also working as a group supervisor with the Drug Enforcement Administration, and unfortunately, during my tenure, during my time there, there were many instances where I saw, and as far as, I knew firsthand and I saw firsthand the devastating effects of the trafficking and the utilization of drugs. And there were a number of instances that I can recall that some of these individuals that we had to question, and some of the individuals that we had to confront with regards to the usage of these controlled substances, were females that were of child, with child, and individuals who unfortunately had a... were of child, with child, and individuals who unfortunately had a, a, a mental illness. And, and the, the, what they were experiencing and what they were going through. I then moved, fast-forwarding, I, after my life in, in, in law enforcement, when I started to become a drug prevention specialist, and trying to teach people, and try, and help businesses put together their drug-free workplace programs, there was also, at that point in time, starting to get a scare, that we have with, and, and I think, I think you can recall this, Madam Speaker, many years ago, there was this whole concern, and this whole, I guess, educational process of ICE babies. Well, Madam Speaker, they exist, and they continue to exist. Today, it's not called ICE babies, today it's called ecstasy babies, today it's called cocaine babies. There's a number of them. And there are, there is scientific evidence to, to show, and to, to suggest, and to prove that these females, when pregnant and utilizing these drugs, have, they do cause great harm to that, that unborn child. So, one of the things that we need to do is, is, is basically, and, and a lot of times, you got these drug traffickers who are scrupulous. They don't care who they sell this, they, they sell their drugs to. That doesn't matter to them. To you, to them, it's an individual, it's somebody that comes in front of them, flashes the money in front of them, they give the wares. And there is no concern, and there's no matter to this. And what we've done before, and, and, and I tell you, one of the things that we started to see with regards to effective enforcement is, when we started to designate places as drug, drug-free school zones, and then we started to show, to, 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 to enhance the penalties, and as far as distribution to those individuals who are below the age of eighteen. And I think we should go back and continue to protect, and if you can recall, and it was passed by this body, and I'll sign into law, where we included in the drug-free school zones, the, the daycare centers and the nurseries, those places where are the most vulnerable in our community, the babies, these kids are at. And we, this body saw that it was, it was good policy to say, that's going to be included in drug-free school zones. And what this, what, what this will do now, is continue to provide those, the enhancement to making these, these laws stronger, to strengthen it, to protect the other members of this, of, of our community that feel we need to protect. And sometimes, and, and there could be the argument, well, you know, it was their choice, it was that person's choice to be able to go over there. Well, you know what? Let's turn this around, and last time, use that as a deterrence. So, drug, drug trafficker knows, and they're continuing to know, you distribute to an eighteen, about an individual below eighteen years of age, or in a drug-free school zone, you know you're going to get an enhanced penalty. There's no if, ands, or buts about it, and a lot of cases, and most especially when it, you know, when it goes before, and in my time, when we took it before a federal judge, there was no deferring from, and, and taking away from, from, that, that these things were occurring. And even if you were to plead down, you know, the, the distribution itself, you couldn't plea away that it, the fact of the matter, that it happened with, with an individual below the age of eighteen, or that it happened in a drug-free school zone. And so, if we add the extra deterrence of making it illegal, or enhancing the penalty, when you distribute it to these other individuals, then it helps to strengthen the drug law there. What this bill further does is, in, in, in reading our current statute, what our, our current statutes has, has written with regards to drug-free school, school zone, I believe there was some ambiguity with regards to whether or not there is a crime that is being committed. So, what this bill would do is basic, is, 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 for lack of a better term, rewrite that, that section of the law, so that it is clear that it is against the law, that it is illegal to, to, to distribute or to conduct drug transactions in the, in the vicinity, in, in a drug-free school zone, or within the vicinity of a school. With that, Madam Speaker, I ask my, my colleagues for their support in this piece of legislation. It'll help, again, to, to, to strengthen and enhance our current drug laws. I ask for their support, and I'll sit and listen to, to hear any conversations that we may have. Thank you.
On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I, I stand proudly to support this new amendment. I'm not usually one who wants to direct the court on how they're supposed to do their sentencing, but a couple of years ago, I was in Las Vegas to visit a, the West Care Center there, and I had the opportunity to meet with the women that were there, most of the, most, if not all of them, were there because of the fact that they were drug users. And a number of them were able to keep their children with them while they were in the rehab center. And there was one woman who was doing drugs into her eighth month, and when I got there, I was able to carry her baby in the palm of my hand. The effects that drugs have on, on, on the neonatal process is, is absolutely frightening. And one of the reasons why I left juvenile court was I kept saying, I didn't want to be there when we finally had all the, the ICE babies and the cocaine babies, that many of the people that were having children, I don't even use the word M, the M-word for them, because anybody who's having a child and does not have the decency to make sure that they not only have the, all the prenatal care that they need, but don't take the precaution not to take drugs, or alcohol, or smoke during their pregnancy, I cannot use the M-word to describe them, I just call them breeders. And I really do think it's imperative that people who, who prey upon these, these, these women, and the other, that, that others that are listed, the children under the age of eighteen, are, are, are citizens of this island, who, who have mental impairments. I, I just think it's criminal to, to take advantage of people who, who don't have the ability to be able to understand the ramifications of what they're being given, and what they're being made addicted to. But I, I really do stand, especially to protect the, the, the little, little babies, because I, they will be a, a problem for, for our community forever. Not only in the, the high cost of their, their care after they're born with, with very major birth defects or problems, but as they grow older, their, their thought processes and the synapses that they're going to be having will be affected. So, I stand in full support, and I, I am thankful that the good Senator from Baragati introduced this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Vice Speaker, on the motion, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of bill number two-two-zero dash thirty-one, and, and to add to what the previous speaker had just cited, I, every morning and every afternoon, as I'm driving to and from here, I watch a steady line of people walking up and down the hill from the hospital, because they're residents of mental health and substance abuse. And you just know, because their eyes are so vacant. And I know that's their exercise time, because that's what they do. They leave mental health, they walk down the hill, they walk past payless, and then they turn around and they walk back. And then other times, I watch them on their grounds, just looking at the hospital, or just looking out at the street, and I, you know, I just, anything we can do to protect these people who need a little extra help is what we need to do. I don't think, well, some people may have been in that situation because of bad choices, bad decisions, but honestly, I don't think anyone chooses to have a mental illness. I certainly know that, as I live and discover the world of disabilities, we certainly didn't choose to be in this world. So, any piece of legislation or policy that will help protect them, and to help send the message out that we shall, we shall respect every human being, we shall uphold them with the highest regard, and anybody who does otherwise shall know that there will be penalties. So, Madam Speaker, I, I offer my full support for this, I thank Senator Blas for offering it, and I ask the body for their support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Blas, you're going to close, or you want to send it down?
No, ma'am, just go ahead and motion, move it down third.
On the motion, and send substitute bill number two twenty to the voting file without Substitute bill number two twenty-four, recognize the author, Senator Tonyada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to that two-two-four thirty-one, substituted by the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, we set down to the third reading file. I'd like to speak on it.
And you'd like to speak on it?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
We are back in session. Senator Munia Barnes?
Madam Speaker, if I may, I'd like to ask if we can move to recess, subject to the call of Speaker. I do know that there are several technical questions, and legal questions that need to be asked regarding the upcoming bill, and I'm just asking that we, if we can recess, subject to your call.
Okay. Thank you very much. On that motion, without any objections, so order.